Harris.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Kuiper.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, we got all kinds of budget updates, communications, and we'll go through those when we get to the budget again. That brings us down to the persons we heard. Joel? Where are Joel?
Good evening, Joel Jackson. I here representing Gateway Akila, just here in case anybody has any questions regarding the Capitol Ivan addresses some of the needs of the buildings that we operate on behalf of the city. So let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Anybody else here to address the council? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Proposed 2016 general government operating capital improvement budget deferred from November 30th. We have a whole bunch of budget updates in the book, and some of them do need motions. Number 11, number 15, and we can have some motions. Go ahead.
Your Honor, I move the City Council amend the 216 general government annual budget by increasing the building maintenance division engineering architectural service account, account number 640-02, by $2,900.
Second.
Who did the second, Bob?
Yeah, apparently we need to have some engineering and work done to make sure that when we put HVAC on the building that it's in balance with the system that we have, is the way I understand it.
All right.
I think that's money well spent up front.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Harris.
Aye.
Zingy.
Yes.
Seaberton.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Kooz.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to nothing. That brings us to number 15, general government operating capital budget update, 15E911 Central Communications Division overtime. Go ahead.
Your Honor, I move the Council amend the 216 general government operating capital budget by decreasing the E911 Central Communications Division 216 overtime account, account number 501-01, by 12,500 to 112,500.
Who did the second, Bob? Do you want to say anything?
No, I think you did a good job of seeing where they were at and bringing back the recommendation. Thank you.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Isom.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Kooz.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Seaberton.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to nothing. Checking to see where our next motion is.
Twenty-one, may I leave you, Your Honor?
Twenty-one is correct. Alternative financing plan for the fire department, proposed acquisition of a ladder truck. Does anybody want to make that motion so we can at least talk about it?
I'll make the motion so we can talk about it. I move the City Council amend the 216 general government operating capital budget by financing acquisition of a 1.1 million ladder truck for the fire department through the $500,000 drawdown of the appropriate reserves of the public works sales tax fund and a $600,000 loan from the economic and parking development fund, repayable over a five-year period with equal annual installment of $120,000 commencing in 217.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. Bob, do you want to start it?
Well, and I'd like to thank our shop supervisor Dennis Bergen for his report on that particular vehicle. And again, I'd like to thank staff for going out and trying to figure out a way to better finance this vehicle. And I do understand the fact that by deferring a vehicle, it may push it up against other apparatuses, but hopefully we can balance that. I'm a little concerned moving forward, and I think it's a topic of discussion as we continue to move through the budget is what the economic outlook for Ketchikan is once the state projects that we presently have funded run out. I don't see anything in the queue to replace those, and I think that will definitely affect sales tax, it will definitely affect, I think, our utilities. So I'm still not in favor of funding this this year. I don't have a plan to look at the long-range capital project for equipment with the fire department, but I definitely didn't like doing a bond, and I'm still a little bit concerned about what the condition of the vehicle is in that we can use it for a while longer.
Anybody else? Judy, then Dick.
Pretty simple for me. I mean, I get it, but we can't afford it this year, so I think we have to make do with what we have until we can afford it.
Dick?
Yeah, I agree with both what Bob and Judy said, and I'm not going to support it, but I think, by the same token, I think the chief was talking about getting up to, I think this goes up to three stories, and I think there's probably some equipment in town that would get a body up three stories and maybe a hose, and maybe we ought to get creative and have a backup, ought to have a backup anyway. The city may have a lift, a bucket lift or something that would get that far. Tyler Randall may have something, so let's take a look and see if there's an emergency backup in case something did go wrong.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'm, have to review this. I agree with Bob, and I'm willing to delay the project, too. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Call the roll, please.
Seaberton?
No.
Kooz?
No.
Zingy?
No.
Harris?
No.
Isom?
No.
Gage?
No.
Okay, that fails six to nothing.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
How do we address this in the budget? Do we have to ask for a deferral of that capital project?
You've made...
Yeah, basically we did that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, girl.
Yeah, that brings us to number 22, we have a motion.
Your Honor? I move to amend, I move the City Council amend the 2016 general government operating capital budget by increasing appropriation for the public works, solid waste department Plaza Trash Compactor Capital Improvement Project by 30 grand for 2016 and decreasing the estimate for 2015 by 30 grand.
Second.
Who did the second? Dick?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Anybody else?
Um...
Bob?
Girl, there's going to have to be, do we have contracts in place to manage trash compactor?
It's being under review right now by the city attorney and the solid waste supervisor and the finance director.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Zingy?
Upstee.
Kooz?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to zero to one. All right, that takes us to...
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Um, I don't know if we need forehands or a motion, but update number 18 is in regard to scope of service for the study we're going to have down on the water and wastewater. And FCS group believes that without the special metering rate class that we're talking about, it would be difficult to administer some exceptions in proposed rate structures. And I believe that if I read it right, they said that this would be at no extra cost in order to come up with that information, so either by motion or show of forehand, I think we should add this to that project.
I'm finding anything else to work. Yeah. And it's, Carl, we're not going to have to pay extra?
That's what finance director indicates.
Okay, go ahead, Dick.
While we're on the topic, we talked about a commercial metered rate, and I think that we ought to have these guys talk about a residential metering rate, so that maybe a number of people would put a meter on their house if they knew what it might cost them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If that's the council direction, we can certainly look into it, but I don't think that's going to be possible without additional costs.
Oh, I understand. Bob?
Yeah, I, again, I understand the desire to move into the metered rates and residential, and I think at some point in the future that would probably happen, but I don't think that our problem in the rate structure exists at this time with the residential rates, except for the fact that I still believe that they're probably paying more and they're fair share. But moving forward, I do think that we need to start working on our larger users and some of the other commercial entities out there.
Carl, when are we going to have that larger, first with the processor guys, isn't that another year away? Okay, but that was our first scope, was those major guys work our way, because we are a lopsided, our residential pays more than our industrial.
Yeah, that was the plan. We're not talking about increasing the, implementing the metered rate structure until 2017, so we have a year to get our ass together and get a plan in place and agree with the council.
And then EC Phillips, are we in contact with them and their improvements they were wanting to make before we instituted that change in rates? Have we checked to see if they're moving along, or?
I haven't, but we did have contact with them prior to finalizing the scope of the agreement between the city and FCS to update the rate study, and we sought input from them, and they made their views known to us, and we modified the scope.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah, I did make informal contact with them. They have done some stuff on water conservation, but they yet to have anything in regards to maybe the heat exchanger for their compressors, so, but they were in the middle of a particular portion of their season, and it was difficult for them to talk much about what their progress was.
Bob, and Dick?
The manager said it would probably, if we went to a residential, found out what a residential metered rate would be, it would probably cost us more, and I would be curious that, and maybe think we ought to find out what that would be and how much time that would take, because it may be cheaper to do it right now than it is to wait whenever we said we might do it a year out or something. I'd just, and bring that back to us that they'll give us the cost.
Anybody else?
Oh, not on that subject. I got another one I want to bring up.
Now, did we have a motion, or? We have forehands to add that to the scope of work? One, two, three, four. All right, Bob?
Yeah, we did bring up update number 12, which was in regard to the canine, and at particular time, the chief was out of town, and Josh said that the chief may be better to speak to this particular issue when he's back. Chief, could you come forward and talk to us a little bit about the canine program? I asked for some cost estimates, which of course Bob was able to get to me. I guess my concern is there is already a canine with the state troopers, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and the officer here in this particular one has, he's on regular patrol now?
He is.
Okay, and so my thought process is, given the latest regulations marijuana, and I know that there's a lot of things that the dog may still be able to do, but in reality, I guess I want to see, talk to you about your position on the canine at this particular point in time.
Certainly. To begin with, Alan Bingerd, Chief of Police, the canine we currently have, obviously is a four cent dog, includes marijuana, being one of the Cincy techs. At this point in time, as far as casework, he's pretty much useless to us. He's been used quite a bit for public relations and public contact, and that's about the extent of his use at this point in time. Overall, the canine program, it's kind of a luxury for a community our size, and application wise for casework is relatively minimal. They can be used at times where they can resolve a case, but most times, that's not the issue. A lot of the cases are built by police work, by, so overall, I mean, my recommendation would be, it's probably time to be without a dog for a while.
Your Honor?
Yes. I guess, I guess, Alan, could you give us, come back with a plan to retire the dog, what that would look like?
Certainly.
How we'd manage it?
I've spoken with the handler. The handler would be more than happy to take the dog. That'd been our intent, should we retire the dog, was to turn him over to the handler. I believe Booker now is, he's five or six years old, maybe even more, so I mean, maybe another couple of good years out of him if he were kept in service.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess at this point, having heard that, I would move to, move forward with removing the dog in the budget at this point.
I would second that.
How much dog amount is that?
$22,366.51.
And just for reference, that's the base cost of the canine handler. In addition to that, should, with casework, there's overtime expenses that he's called out, brought on the scene, things of that nature, which has diminished greatly over the last year since Prop 2 has passed.
And there is the ongoing maintenance of the dog, we understand, but we just had some surgery that wasn't included in this particular cost, and the older dogs, the harder pets get, we understand that those things happen.
Does it have any benefits in the school systems, or just, you know, it's kind of like that, if you see it, kind of deteriorates?
Primarily, I think the benefit we're getting out of having Booker in schools is the visual effect of having a dog walking through. As far as actual applications within the school district, been very minimal. The reason for that is if we have reasonable suspicion to believe that there is drugs somewhere within the school, school administrators have the right to do a search anyway, so we need that same reasonable suspicion around the dog, so I mean, it's redundant in that
Anybody else? I sort of like him as a PR in the school, but...
Well, there's nothing to say that you can't still bring him to school.
Don't like you for $22,000.
Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kai, oh, sorry. Kooz?
No.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to one. All right, we have a couple more still, number, oh, thanks, Alan. That takes us to budget update number 23, Public Health Department proposed Gateway Center for Health Human Services building and grounds renovation. I think Carl brought that up today, said today that there was going to be some stuff needing to be done.
That's number 23?
Yes, 23.
Your Honor, I move the City Council amend the 216 general government operating capital budget by adding 225,000 appropriation for the Public Health Department Gateway Center for Human Service Building and Grounds Renovation Capital Improvement Project.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Bob, do you want to start?
Well, early on, I asked Carl, since we did work at turning the operations over to Akila, and we're trying to move the property over to him also, and Carl, if you would like to explain why we haven't got there yet, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, as the council is aware, perhaps with the exception of the new council members, we have issues relative to the subdivision of the properties that are affecting both the hospital and Akila. We've talked about those in executive session. We've been attempting to address those, but we are not anywhere near the point of being able to be in a position to transfer the properties to Akila until such time as that is done. We're on the hunt. Those buildings are ours. It's our responsibility to maintain them in a decent condition. These issues have been brought to light by Mr. Jackson. The number that I put in is worst-case scenario at this point. I have not had a chance to talk to Mr. Corporal or the Building Maintenance Division supervisor relative to how much of this work could be done in-house, but it is work that's going to have to be done one way or the other.
Now, Bob, then Dick.
Prior to the transfer of the property, did we have any kind of starting agreement for the occupancy and maintenance of that facility in regards to Akila's responsibility, if any?
And basically, any major capital improvements are ours, they're not Akila's.
Dick?
Yeah, I, I take it, maybe as our staff looked at the building to see whether the, I think the flooring painting is the main thing that's showing up, and I can't judge the floor, but I, I'm questioning two coats of paint on it. Most of us only put one coat of paint on stuff.
Our staff has not had an opportunity to look at it. We're also talking about the exterior of the buildings, some ground maintenance. This is best-case scenario in terms of identifying the improvement. It's a worst-case scenario relative to the actual cost. If we can get this done using our staff, we'll do it, and we won't contract it out. But I wanted to bring it to your council's attention so you were aware of it, and that this is an issue that needs to be accounted for, or I believe, in the budget. We'll do our best, but the responsibility is ours, there's no avoiding it.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
One comment, so a contract for doing this will come back to us.
Yeah, if we bid anything out, yes.
Okay.
Kooz?
Uh, yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Yeah, five to one. That brings us to update number 24, Public Works Waste Division, CIPP Sewer Lining Capital Improvement Project in 2016 Force Main Replacement Capital Improvement Project.
I don't think that's in there.
Anybody got a motion? Okay.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
I may have the City Council amend the 2016 general government operating capital budget by increasing the estimate for wastewater division CIPP sewer lining capital project by $9,800 and reducing the amount requested for the 2016 force main replacement capital account by $9,800.
Do we have a second? Very good. Judy, do you want to speak to it?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. We'll just move in.
Bob, did you want to add anything?
Well, Carl, when do we, when do we think we're going to actually get into that part
Steve says, do you want to address that?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Seth Frackey, Assistant Public Works Director. So this allowed us to bring down a consultant from Anchorage specific to cured in place pipe. He has expertise in that area, but specific to the question on construction work, our first goal in 2016 is to complete, work on the design for this project and get it completed, and then hopefully get some construction work done in 2016.
Yes. So we put the sock inside of the pipe and expand it, and we get it to cure against the outer thing, and I don't know if we've got to go in and cut really for the laterals or something for gravity, but in a force main, we wouldn't necessarily have that issue. How much can we run? What's the distance between runs?
It's about 400 feet for this diameter of pipe, and what we're learning is depends on if there's valves, fittings, different fixtures, but about 400 feet is the rule of thumb.
And what is the overall range of the Stedman Street project we're talking about?
So the, this phase, the first phase we need done is actually from Jefferson Street to Tremont Street?
Yeah, I understand we're going to do that, but we're talking about doing something similar within the Stedman Street project? No?
No, the council directed us not to pursue that, given funding concerns.
Well, the only reason why I'm asking that is if the state is to move forward with that project, at the time they have the road tore up, we may want to have them put in the appropriate diameter manholes over the top of the mains that we're going to replace, so we don't have to dig in the road, we can just open up a manhole and get access to whatever we need to get access to. So it would be interesting if we could look at that project for future reference and have them put them in the ground, even if we're not using them at the particular time, so we don't have to dig it through.
In response to an issue or a question that council member Kooz asked, I think at the last council meeting on that project, we're in the process of putting together a report.
Okay.
All right, call the roll.
Harris?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kooz?
Yes.
All right, I think that's the last of our updates. I love our new update.
Yes, thank you.
Great idea. All right, we're back to the budget, and I think we left off at, we got done with public health, am I correct?
Public Works Engineering.
All right, we're on Q1. Any questions on any engineering?
Your Honor?
Yes.
On Q5, under operating budget changes for 216, there's one in regards to moving expense, account number 53501, and apparently we've put in a new account, and budget $15,000 in anticipation of those moving expenses. How did we handle that in the past, Carl? Was that just something that came through the manager's office and that was built back towards the appropriate department?
If sufficient funding was available within the budget, it would be charged directly to the department. If the budget transfer was necessary to cover the moving expenses, that would be brought to council if it exceeded $12,000.
Well, I guess my concern is about adding a new count is, this is probably something I hope we don't have to do year after year, and so I'd hate to have a new account sitting there that we put a placeholder in, and it raises our budgetary requirement by $15,000.
Well, in this case, we know that we have a new public works director coming, and we're going to be incurring those expenses next year, sees reimbursed for moving across countries, and we wanted to put the funding in place.
So in other words, even if we put the account in, we don't have to put money into it next year? Or whatever?
No, if the anticipated no staff turnover, I would not be putting any money in that account going into 2017.
I just want to make sure we didn't end up with one of these placeholder things where we have to budget for money and...
I understand.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Is there stipulations on that for how long they have to stay?
We have those provisions built into the moving expenses agreement, if they leave suddenly, there's a polarated payback of the moving expenses.
Bob?
I don't think it is as much of an issue in public works, but as we get into utilities, it'd be nice to know how successful we've been at recouping those costs, because we have had some terminations before the payback period, if I remember right. Thank you.
Q15 is the KPU O&M, building O&M.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
As we...
As we have just somewhat added the Fifth Avenue property to potential work for our Building Maintenance, I guess I'd ask, Carl, do you think we have enough money in maybe temporary employment or contract services to cover that, other than what we have in this? If we were to do it ourselves, do you think that 225 is going to be plenty to do it because I know that we have other obligations?
Councilmember Severson, I really don't know if you don't, the money that's in the CIP that you just approved tonight elapsed. You would make arrangements to get the funds in the appropriate account if we do it in-house.
Carl, Q17, we have the demolition of dangerous buildings, $150,000. What's on our next, on our schedule on that?
David, I don't recall what the next ones are. Do you have the...
We're going to have to go back through, which we haven't done since we had the surplus property sale. So we're in the process of reviewing that.
So we don't have anything picked out yet?
Well, there are buildings on the list, and I can tell you that that list is going to be an ever-evolving list that as we get buildings off of it, either through sale or demolition, new buildings will be coming on. It's just...
Well, I understand. I'm just curious, since we did that house up on Fifth or whatever it was, and the Knickerbocker, I was just wondering if we had anything specifically set up for this money?
Do we have a specific building? No, we don't.
Yes.
And I don't know how we get away from this beast because it's unfortunate that property owners don't take responsibility for their property or banks or whoever it is. I don't know who's involved in it, but it follows a con, the public, to take over these building demolitions at a cost. And I don't know if there's any way away from that, but you know, as we continue to move forward, if anybody has any idea, I think it would be... I don't know if we're covering our costs when we do a contract service for demolition of a building and just setting up selling the property.
I'm sure was an answer, Dick?
Yeah, Carl, this is probably your question for Mitch, but it's a kind of update on the status of recouping the money from the building for the tunnel over here we took down in court.
It's similar to, I think, where we are with the, well, I shouldn't say that. We have filed, it's my understanding, we filed a lien on the property. And there are legal proceedings that have to be followed, and Mitch is in the process of doing that. But based on my last conversation with him, I think it's going to be at least probably another year before we get to a trial situation if we in fact go to trial.
Anything else?
As we go through this process, is there, is there any recommendations, Carl, that you can think of? Or hopefully you'll be talking to Mitch about where we can do something in ordinance or statutes to help our case when we have such issues?
We've looked at that once. Let me talk to the attorney again and see if he has anything new to offer.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else on engineering, we can go into cemetery. R1. Only increase there is in that capital project.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, we're talking about capital projects now ongoing in the cemetery. I don't think that our gravesite plots are being used up as fast as public niches are. Is that still the case?
Probably not, no.
And we do have sufficient niche space at this point?
Yeah, I would estimate that we have 10 to 15 years at least, possibly 20.
Great.
Both niche and crypts and grave space. That's my estimate.
Do we still have land up there to expand here? I thought we sold some of the Cape Fogs.
I think we have a little bit to the south, I think. Someone told me that.
We have a pie shape in the back of the upper right section. I think the crick after that on the other side is Coast Guard, but it doesn't mean that we can't try to deal with the Coast Guard to make land available. I'm not sure. But it's all steep ground back there in a very short period. But I think we have some side issues there and drainage issues that are a major concern.
We do have room to expand the niches and crypts.
Oh, good.
We have lots of room.
You're going to spread me at Northern Walker's. All right. Anything on the cemetery? We're not on that. Let's go to streets.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Starting on S1, there's a, there's a chart at the top that talks about, you know, what we do in the first month of... One of the problems we're having right now is filling the position of the street foreman. And in regards to succession planning, we don't, we don't plan, or the way it's set up now, we don't have the employees that have been working and have the longevity applying for the foreman positions because it takes them out of the union and puts it, and of course, the retirement benefits as when they move are dropped dramatically. And if you're near the, you know, usually you have a senior employee that's already been there for 20 years, and he's not going to get a lot of time in that other plan. I would really like to see us in regards to succession planning, and I think there are ways within union contracts that you can write information. I know it becomes somewhat tough for a union supervisor to discipline union workers. But I think that not only will it give the opportunity for a supervisor to use the tools when you need them to, but it'll give us the opportunity to provide the training to our employees so they can move into a manning position. I think that's for the best thing for the public and the city. So I don't know how that agreement would look, but I think it, because of the size of our community and the size of our crews, it makes sense.
Are we talking about talking to the union?
Well, I think there's a plan there where we're going to have to sit down through some process and talk about that. I know there's no strike clauses that you can give to supervisors while providing them with union benefits and stuff. Where it becomes difficult is that the foreman doesn't get held accountable if he has to do any of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The council would like this at some point as a future agenda item and not a part of budget deliberations. We certainly can do that. I do appreciate what council member Severson is saying, and on the general government side, it might be doable. Experience on the KPU side would lead me to believe that's the kind of road you want to go down overall speaking. Discipline is a very important part of the job of a foreman. And just the natural rules and bylaws of the union, nothing to do with us, just how they operate it, can make it very difficult for a foreman who initiates discipline against a fellow union employee. And that, that's a big issue to overcome, but we certainly can talk about it and bring it forward as an agenda item for council review.
Do you have any great solutions? I mean, it's...
No great solutions on that one. I'd be open to any kind of input that council members have. But that, I agree totally with the issue of succession planning. That's going to be a big issue for this council sooner rather than later.
What is the benefits that they lose when they switch, if they switch over?
Well, basically, you go into the public retirement system, which is a 401K rather than a defined benefit plan with the IBW. And then I'm not sure what the healthcare differences may be with the IBDBO at this point. But that's, that's a sizable difference, especially if you've got 15 years invested and you want to stay for another five years. You're not going to come out for the short pay.
It's a real disincentive to...
It really is.
I agree with that 100%.
But I don't know if it can work or not, but I think it's some conversation we're going to have to have. It's going to happen in the future. We have an aging workforce.
Ask him.
I guess we don't have an aging council. All right, that makes, we're cruising in the Streets Division.
Yeah, Lou, just a question. I think it's on S3. And it talks about, I don't know if I can stop at S3, things that the Streets Crew did. And I know they do a whole lot more than just streets. So I'm curious if whenever they're picking up curbside trash and building 35 new boulevard spaces for the port, things like that, which have nothing to do with the job, are they being paid out of streets or being reimbursed from the benefiting function?
Generally, they're paid out of streets unless it's a major long-time commitment or a major project that funding is made available within, for instance, the Port Department. And I'll leave it at that unless you have further questions.
If it's significant, then I think we need to look at the benefiting function dealing with it. If it's not significant, then I think we work as best as we can. I just, the port has more money than some other places, so...
Agreed.
Anyway, and it may not have been a big deal.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I'm looking at item, account number 603, which is Training and Education. They had $1,900 in that budget. I spoke a little bit in the past about providing more services in-house in regards to infrastructure. And I think at some point, we're going to have to do evaluation of our staff and decide what training we're going to need to bring them up to par so we can do some of our infrastructure ourselves because there's not going to be money coming from the state for, for capital projects. And we have a lot of infrastructure that needs to be worked on. And what I'm talking about specifically is probably work in the streets where you have to do the ditching and the pipe work and all the OSHA regulations required with that, and whether or not we have our personnel trained properly for that.
If you can make that an agenda item for the new year as well?
I appreciate that, Carl. Thank you.
All right. Anything on the seasonal litter program? S8, S9?
Does the Cedar, does that funding come out of the, originally it came out of the mayor's, like it's in it, Carl? When we first started the litter program?
I'm sorry, it came out of...
Then, but once, then we picked that out of the...
Arron Council.
It was, I don't think it was ever charged in the arron council.
Seasonal litter program, originally was funded through the Public Works Staff Fund. I think that was for one year, and then the council changed it to CPV funding.
Okay.
The whole program is 100% CPV funding. I think it's been that way for the last two or three years.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. But that limited to the litter and the brushing and that kind of stuff, yeah? Beautification, I guess, more than anything else.
Yeah, Lou?
Yes, Dick?
Just a comment. It deals with the overtime, which is on S4. The account is 50101. In 2014, there was $61,000 actually spent. We doubled that, more than doubled that for 2015, and we, to date, I have a figure here somewhere of what it was to date. But oh, to date, this year, we've only spent $41,000. So I know it varies by year depending on what the weather's like. But it just seems like $96,000 program for overtime next year is excessive.
Mr. Mayor, we talked about this in our weekly Public Works Staff Meeting a couple of weeks ago. In part due to some of the calls we received when we had our first really cold weather and streets started freezing up. We have been very fortunate over the last three years. We've had very mild winters. And if we have another mild winter, we probably won't spend $96,500. But if we have a more harsh winter than the last three years, we'll blow through that and we'll be looking for more money. I can guarantee you that. So it's a crapshoot in terms of trying to put that kind of estimate together. Councilmember Kooz is correct. It's all weather-related.
Well, global warming is on the horizon for us.
I didn't feel the global warming a couple of weeks ago.
I apologize for being the first guy to call and complain about a road. That was bad. Bet you guys probably already had dinner and had re-froze, but I was concerned that I might slide down the hill.
Your Honor, we're still going to go through the CIP part.
Yeah, CIP is going to be separate too.
Okay, thank you.
They've got a couple of questions. I'd love to know what the payment will be.
This is a good time to start looking at the cigarette ties, huh? State's already doing that, remember?
They haven't done it yet.
They do it, they'll get the money.
Yeah, I know. Get rid of garage. T1. Budget is static.
Your Honor?
Yeah.
On T3, I'd just like to acknowledge, under their accomplishments, they completed another full year of no lost time accidents. That's fairly, that's fairly significant in the field that they're in, and they should be commended for that.
Good job, Dennis. Anything else on Garage and Warehouse?
I guess for the new council members, I think a little bit of explanation on how that works. There's, you know, we have a central shop that takes care of the majority of the equipment for the Public Works and police and fire portion of the budget. And those revenue generating accounts pay the shop to do their business through internet part of charges and billing where sales tax pays for the tax-based systems. Dennis, how many pieces of rolling stock do you have right now, approximately?
I think there's like 100 pieces of rolling stock and 15 pieces of small lines.
And they have a four-man crew?
Yes.
By the way, thank you for your analysis of the fire truck. Appreciate that.
All right, that moves us on to Building Maintenance. Mr. Hofstadter. Any questions on Public Maintenance? I have five, but I don't know what it was for. Hearing done? You can come back. You can go. Go ahead.
I had one on that pellet boiler system in the Ketchikan Library. Have they, have they done any studies to show that that has saved money?
Carl?
No, we haven't.
I think we're just trying to make the heart break.
Good assessment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Based on, uh, it was like ten thousand below what it cost the previous year. Yeah, if you look at the, it was ten thousand dollars less.
To heat it?
Yeah.
All right, solid waste. How's our collections staff doing? I hear we've had injuries and needing to hire people?
Lenny Lee's always superintendent. We've got one guy that's been off since August with a broken leg or broken foot. And, uh, we just had another collector that went over from the Street Division. So, we've been tight people.
Then I know you guys are advertising for a position, so that's one?
Yeah, that's the, the guy that just went over to, uh, the Streets.
And so we're only down one position?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Lenny?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
Good evening, Lenny.
Good evening.
Um, a couple of things, in the disposal services, we have, uh, a pretty good increase in our disposal costs. And I would just want to, and, and that's a twenty-five percent increase and that's due to the contracts of, of what we're doing. Uh, in that, there's also a cost associated with, um, the containers and the chassis that we're trying to deal with. Do you know, uh, and I, I know that you've worked in other areas, but how we can maybe reduce some of the stuff that we ship? Or if there's a, a plan out there where we can maximize our resource that we have here in the town with our landfill or anything like that?
As far as shipping material?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I, I mean, as far as shipping now, I mean, we maximize all of our loads. We're pushing legal limit of about thirty-one tons of load since we weigh in each and every bale. You know, as far as shipping, I mean, I, I don't, uh, the new contract, we have fuel surcharge on there. And, uh, I think the shipping portion of it is, uh, fifty dollars a ton is what we're paying. Then, uh, our disposal's doubled, it's went from twenty-eight dollars a ton to fifty-six dollars a ton. So, with that being said, as far as reducing the expense, obviously the more, you know, recycling that we do, more impact there.
Our inert landfill stuff, right?
That's correct.
If we do a separation of some of the inert materials?
Right.
Is that something you need the public to do to make it a little more efficient?
Yeah, and that's all part of the budget. I mean, we, you know, we really need to expand up there is really where we're at. I mean, we're, you know, uh, you know, with, uh, the shipping now, we pay for containers that sit over ten days. And it works out, I believe, to almost like forty-five dollars a day. So, we're moving material into our Quonset hut, paper and cardboard and involves, you know, double handling every day.
Do they charge you for after so long of it being up there?
They, they just started that this year and, yeah, we used to, uh, you know, we had an extra bay to keep a cardboard container in. And then we made a little bay deal outside for mixed paper. And that's all went away based on what they would charge us per day for that to sit there. So, we gotta wait till we get a full load and then, you know, put it in the Quonset, drag it all back to the building and reload, reload the trailer, but it's made it very difficult.
Yeah, and hit with the same charge.
Do you have a bin where, um, you can separate, like people can bring their cardboard up and put it in?
Yeah, we, we, we have a drop center up there.
Oh, I haven't been up there in a long time.
And, uh, the, the, uh, you know, I encourage, encourage you to take a trip up, I'll give you a tour. But, uh, you know, we, we installed a new baler this summer and the old baler, we're getting that set up just to do recycling. And, uh, residents as well as businesses will be able to bring cardboard up every day. It's just not certain days and certain times, so we're making it a lot more accessible. And we should be online with that probably within the next three weeks.
Yes, Bob.
We also have plans for, uh, another building, correct?
That's correct. And the budget there, uh, this, and this next year is to finish design. Uh, and then after that, we'll be chasing dollars. But, uh, you know, right now, I mean, the way our recycling is set up, we just cannot expand our program. We, we just don't have the space. You know, it'd be ideally to get into some, some of the plastics, you know, be able to save additional volume there.
My question could be with Carl. You know, we have a twenty-five percent increase on, uh, on, what's that total for the customer again?
Uh, yeah, we increased the shipping fee from a hundred and twenty dollars per ton to a hundred and forty-five dollars per ton.
What about the guy, I mean, collection for my house and everything?
We haven't adjusted that yet, but we're looking at it about a ten percent increase on collection, ten, fifteen percent, in that range.
What year?
Uh, next year, two thousand fifteen.
So, it's not talked about, I thought we talked about an increase in the budget.
We have, but we haven't brought any ordinance for that will happen after the first of the year.
Okay, and what did, um, in your transmittal letter, did you, didn't you write about a, a proposed increase and how much?
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying, I can't remember what it was, that's why I'm asking.
What's the dollar amount for it?
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, can't recall that, but I can, I can get it for you.
I can just look it back, I was just hoping you had.
We, we have three bucks.
Fifteen to eighteen, I believe.
And we also have a commercial rate that we'll be adjusting, is that correct?
Yeah, we are commercial rate. Commercial can rates, I think it's three thirteen a can, and that's gonna go up as well. There's a, uh, a disposal component and a collection component, so it can have three thirteen.
I was just trying to figure out how much that total is gonna affect each customer.
I think on the, on the residential side, I think the collection's gonna go up about, uh, about a dollar a month, if I remember correctly. And then we'd have to add to that the, um, the non-area wide disposal fee, which went from fifteen to eighteen.
Thank you very much.
In the water and sewer.
All right, anything else on, um, disposal? Public Works Solid Waste. Anything on recycling or collections?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Uh, this is a question for Lenny again. Uh, when we originally got into the recycling portion of this, we went through a contract with, at that time, Rabanco to provide us with some containers. And we had a hook lift truck to, to manage that and it was a hundred percent recycled. So, we put a, I think, a person, uh, at the landfill in to help handle that material and plus do the collection.
You're talking about the hook truck?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hook truck services. Well, that has expanded dramatically and, and is, is that still coming out of recycling? Or is that coming out of disposal or collection?
That actually, that actually, we have a separate line item set up on, on recycling. And those dollars are actually coming out of that, I believe. But we're using that, utilizing the hook truck that's, that's on the collection side.
Is that, is that the right way to do it? You'll bring it back later, huh?
Everybody does it different. I mean, I've seen more of the hook trucks because of the volume, you know, ninety percent of the volume's the landfill side. So, I've seen more of those, those, you know, those in particular have been on the landfill side because that really, you know, that's where most all the work does. It, it's not residential and it's not really commercial, it's kind of a line of its own. But I've seen a lot of areas where that expense is on the landfill side because all that materi, just about all the material at least hauling, a good part of it is going in the landfill. And then he does have stuff that he brings in the building, but.
I guess my question is, what particular division of Solid Waste is best able to absorb that cost?
I, I mean, I would say the landfill side.
Disposal.
In the same way, you know, on the recycling, I mean, it is all community stuff, you know, it is area wide.
Well, I think that we're gonna increase the volume of that hook lift because if we can do similar to what we're talking about doing at the, the plaza and reduce our service calls, that's saving us money and saving the customers.
Yeah, and ideally with, uh, currently now, you know, we have two stops that we do, you know, six days a week. Uh, one would be the mall and the other one would be the hospital. Now, the hospital, you know, put a compact or in a Santa pack to handle all different things here. So, when their construction's done and they put that back in, we won't have that pull every day, be every two weeks. And then if we can, you know, go forward with the one we wanna put in the mall, then we don't have permanent stops every day for that truck, which ideally this time of year, we'll be cutting days saying, look, we're just gonna run that truck three days a week instead of six. So, yeah, it opens a lot of, a lot of different opportunities.
Yeah, that's good efficiency. Thank you.
All right, anything left on collections? Any questions on wastewater?
Uh, Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
Just for clarification, when I look at the, the, um, chart of, uh, employees here and you have the Public Works Department, the Wastage Supervisor. So, the way this is set up is a lab analyst directing the operators? What's that? I, I just, just the way this thing is, it, and I don't know if that's the way it's happening. It just, it looks funny the way it's laid out.
Acting Public Works Director Steve Corpron, uh, the lab analyst is no longer our supervisor.
Oh, they were in the past, yeah?
It wasn't in the, the flow chart, but, uh, the person was being treated as such.
Oh, okay.
That's been, that's been rectified.
Okay, I, it, just the way it's sitting on this page, it looked, and I didn't realize that's the way it was, so, thank you.
Yes.
Anything on wastewater?
So, if, um, water, like, do they have a, um, something on, uh, water that's leaking or how that is handled or?
Say again.
Like if somebody has a broken pipe and it's running into, you know, into the street or?
That's Water Department.
Water Department.
Wrong place, okay.
Your Honor? And, and I guess there's a question for Charles. I see that we have a sixteen percent increase in, uh, chemicals. Is, is that a new chemical or is it just more of the old chemical?
Charles. Charles Mackey, wastewater supervisor. No, it's, it's basically more of the same. The cost has increased due to production cost, uh, fuel costs, those kind of things. We do now use one extra different chemical, which is de-chlor. We de-chlorinate at the treatment plant so that we don't go into any type of, uh, release of chlorine at the ethylene. Rather expensive, but that's a very small portion of our purchases. Mostly it's all in chlorine.
If we were to go to meter rates, uh, what is, how much water do you use for dilution now, Charles? Ethylene.
Um, well, okay, currently in the wintertime, we're very low on our use of any extra water. Generally throughout the warmer, drier months, that we can call dry around here, we'll go up to around a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand gallons a day.
And, and that, if, if we were to go to, right now, you're doing a flat rate. If we were to go to meter rate, that would be?
It'll be factored in.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I know that we talked a little bit about finding another water source, uh, up the hill if we could do that. But, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned because treating everybody fairly as we go forward is we have considerable water usage in our harbors and in the wastewater department that is a concern.
Any other questions for Charles?
Um, one of the other, is it, Charles, is it new that you're doing the, um, I guess, independent purchasing of vehicle maintenance materials?
Oh, fifteen oh one.
I, yeah, I think that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, fine, yeah. That is relatively new. It just helps expedite get parts and, uh, purchasing small items and for the vehicles, you know, primarily the factors what we were purchasing parts for.
Okay, specialty type stuff for it?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I was just concerned because I know that Revenue Department's paying service fees back to the, uh, shop helps support their budget and I just didn't wanna see us doing a workaround on that. And I understand if you got a specialized vehicle, maybe that, that works better for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Anything else on wastewater?
Do we know how much the increases on the chemicals will be over time or?
What's that?
How much they're gonna increase the chemicals over time or?
She was asking how much we may have to increase chemicals over time, Charles?
To answer that question, we intend to continue to try to reduce the use of chemicals. One of the reasons we use so much water is it helps, uh, keep the, the temperature down. Keeping the temperature down keeps the production of biological action down. We are a purely physical removal system. We do not use biological action. So, anything beyond mechanically removing waste solids? It's a chemical reduction of, uh, biohazard and the pathogens and so. But we are attempting to get a medium where we don't use more, but the price is just gonna continue to climb like any consumable.
Yeah.
Charles, does any of that impact your mixing zone and water qualities reporting? Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Dick?
Yeah, this question may be for Bob. Page W five, uh, account six thirty oh three, bank and merchant charges. Ten grand for those folks, this department, I'm not, I don't quite understand what they do that would bring that on there. It's account six thirty oh three, mer, bank and merchant charges. Unless they buy, unless they buy a lot of stuff and they, they, they charge us for using the credit card. But I don't think that's happening.
Actually, it is, it is credit cards. The credit card charge appears on the KPU bill, the wastewater. And customers are allowed to use credit cards to pay their KPU bill. And so we allocate a portion of the credit card charging back to all of the utilities that, uh, show up on the KPU bill.
Okay. Any other questions? For wastewater, join once. Bob, anything else?
Um, I may have something in capital, but I'm not sure.
Okay, let's move on to, thanks, Charles. Let's move on to harbors. Everything's pretty sick there. The operations, that big increase is, I believe, bonding their debt service.
Hey, Lou?
Yes, Dick?
Um, this is gonna be a combined question between ports and harbors because they share the same office. Furniture and fixtures between the two of them, I think it's close to five to six thousand dollars. I'm having a real problem with that much new furniture stuff going into there.
Steve Corpron, Port and Harbors Director. I thought it was only a thousand or two each.
Two thousand on the harbors and I gotta go down to the ports, but I was thinking it was close to three. But I'd have, I gotta catch up with it here.
Well, I can tell you, we haven't spent much.
I don't think, I don't think you've spent much. That's probably why I'm wondering.
I will admit, I finally had to buy myself a chair about two months ago.
Hey, you're not overweight, you can't bring a chair.
I inherited a chair eight years ago and I should have replaced it then, but I, I felt so guilty buying myself a chair.
It was six thousand dollars over there.
No, uh, I found one on sale for about five hundred, I think it was. Each year, we. Um, each year we usually end up buying by one, maybe two chairs, if they get worn out throughout the department, um, but we, we haven't spent five thousand a year total on furniture, I can tell you that.
Anything on harbors or parts?
Steve, can you tell me on your temporary wages?
Harbors or ports?
Hmm?
Harbor or port?
Oh, ports, you, 'cause you said either one.
Either one. Just wanna make sure I'm on the right page.
Uh, how, how does that break down between security and crossing guards? Do you have a breakdown?
Not between those two, uh, for the port, we hire three, uh, temporary assistant harbor masters, and then we have thirty positions we try to keep filled for port security slash crossing guards. Um, we, we hire them to do both. Now, some of them like just doing port security and some like just doing streets, some do both, and through the course of a summer, we might actually hire forty to fifty people, um, to keep those thirty positions filled as we have people come and go. Especially the college kids, some can get here in May, but that means they usually have to leave by the end of August, some get here sometime in June, those are the ones that go back to school in September. We have thirty positions we try to keep filled with them.
Yeah, I know, I ask this question every year, it's, I think we ought to be going out for an RFP is getting somebody like, uh, cruise line agencies to set up a security kind of the coast guard and do it, 'cause I still think it could be done for half to seventy-five percent of what we're spending, but I don't know whether we'll get there.
The, uh, there's a difference between what is required by the coast guard at the various bursts and in what we staff it at, I will admit, especially on one and two, that we will have extra people at times, and that's more for safety, crowd control, traffic control, as opposed to what we have to have for port security. And I think that's a, an important part of the job for them down there, being able to keep people away from the gangway changes, the forkless and that when they're doing that, keeping people from crossing in front of buses as they move down the dock, uh, they also pick up litter, do dog feces patrol, uh, things like that, so it's not just where they have to be, if the coast guard came by and said, okay, where are your port security people, you know, you're supposed to have one here, one there, and that, um, so, there's the number we have to have for port security, and then the number we, we go a little above that, especially at one and two, that need to provide good customer service and good safety, uh, for all of our tourists.
And not funding comes from the, um, the head tax too or?
The port enterprise front, majority of the, of the, um, the fees, the revenue are from the cruise ship, head tax and the mortgage and mortgage fees.
Now, a big boat comes in here, parks down on berth three, um, one of the big ones, what's the charge for them to dock in there?
When you, eh, let's say it's one that has twenty-five hundred passengers and nine hundred and sixty feet long, you have your dockage fee, based on the length of the ship, you have your port development fee, you've got your head tax, uh, all told, a ship that size can run upwards to forty grand for the day.
Okay.
That's why we really hate it when one skips due to weather, yeah, 'cause not only does the community lose out, I lose out. So we, we don't take it lightly.
How often does that happen?
We got lucky this year we didn't lose any, the year before we lost, I think, eight in two weeks.
Yeah.
It was, it was a really rough couple of weeks at the end of two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
And it, it was, it was tough, it was, it was tough for the merchants and it was tough for our budget as well.
All right, any other questions?
Yeah, just one more, Steve, I, I was gonna probably bring this to you later, but I'd do it now, uh, dock four, the maintenance down there, uh, I'm not gonna talk about the dock, but say the canopy and the, uh, parking area, driving area, is that us or them or?
Under the berth four lease agreement, everything, uh, on, for the, the paved area, for, for lack of a better term, and, and the, and the actual berth itself and all that maintenance is on us, uh, with the exception of the dock structure, you know, basically the sheet pile retaining wall, uh, the exceptions written into that are replacing the annos, that was one of the specific things we have to do under the lease, is, is ma- maintain the annos, so we do have a project, uh, in two thousand sixteen to replace the annos. The, we have been talking with them, it, it talked about owner or, um, tenant improvements, and that's when it all came in with the, the, the berth four tender float there, the one that, we gave them a couple sections of float, they put it in, it broke apart. Tenant improvements are on us, even though they're the ones that put it in, the, the lease is currently silent on owner improvements. So, the, the shelter they built after the lease was signed, uh, the, the shelter over by the, the transfer bridge, and then they later put the side skirt, the, the, the side glass on it, it looks like that, maybe so that is on us as well, even though it wasn't part of the lease agreement that we signed, and it had a list, or it said all the stuff that was in place as part of the berth four thing, so, that one hasn't needed any real maintenance except for some damage that one of my guys did earlier this year, that we see.
Yeah.
But, uh, at some point, we're probably gonna have to go back and negotiate some changes to the lease to address owner improvements.
Okay, 'cause, and that's, there were two or three of those that I didn't know who, who would take care of, and one that you mentioned, the glass that one of our guys did.
Yeah, that's on us to fix.
And it, it needs to be fixed, and that whole area in there needs to be power washed, and the windows need to be washed, it's getting where you can't see, they're hard to see through, or you can write your name on them, so I don't know, I didn't know whether it was us or, or those guys.
Maintenance on us, one of the gray areas is the bus stop the borough built.
Yeah.
It's not part of the original lease agreement, it wasn't a tenant improvement, uh...
How about having the guys to go down there with a drill, there's a water hole standing right in the middle of that thing that the tourists walk through with their tennis shoes every day, every time it rains, you know where it's at, put a hole in the ground, let it drain. But anyway, those, I was wondering about those things.
Those are issues we've been dealing with, um, we, we aren't, we did talk to, uh, the owners rep about two months ago, uh, about a month, month and a half in advance of this year's season, we're gonna do a complete, uh, survey with them, walk around with my guys and, and their guys, and come up with a list of stuff that we know we need to get done before the season and stuff that we need to get done during the season this year.
All right, any other things on ports and harbor?
The other exception is the barge, because they end up, we agreed to them putting in a used barge when they built berth four, they accepted responsibility for that barge, uh, that's, and there's, that's a, a special carve-out in the, the final lease, there was, there was a lease addendum amendment that you guys approved, I think it was sometime in two thousand and eight, that, that berth four barge is completely on the owners to maintain that, since it was a World War Two surplus barge.
And Lou, one, one more, um, I, in the, the, um, capital improvements, we were looking at berth three barge going in the dry dock in two years?
Two thousand seventeen.
Is that anticipated to probably go to, to shipyard?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I had some preliminary talks with Doug Ward last year, uh, we're probably gonna get a little more serious this year to make sure that, uh, we can schedule it in properly.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, let's move on, thanks for that.
Oh, Lou, I got one more.
Okay.
Uh, page Y five, and there's a series of things there that's called, oh, vehicle maintenance, software maintenance, buildings and grounds, machinery equipment, structures, technical services, and, and this may be a technical issue of, of the machine that we're accounting with now, but there was probably only, in two thousand fourteen, there was nine thousand dollars in those half a dozen accounts, in two thousand fifteen and now in two thousand sixteen, fifty-four thousand dollars. And I don't know whether that's a jockeying of the new accounting system, moving things around, or whether those are real.
We did bump building and grounds maintenance services up to account for, uh, improvements in the port and security planters, uh, so we had, uh, not only was it, uh, more plants this year, but also that the, uh, maintenance of those was on the, the company that put them in. We also, we did bump up the software stuff a little bit, um, as part of port and harbor for the new, uh, Marina software we put in, and we put up, we bumped one of them for, accounting for the KVB building now on berth two, and we're responsible for the exterior and the, and the utilities up to the fixtures, uh, for that building. KVB's responsible for everything on the inside up to the, including the fixtures, I mean, back to the fixtures, so if there's a pipe problem, it's on us, if it's a wiring problem, it's on us, but if it's a light problem?
Mm-hmm.
Or a sink problem, that's on them.
Well, I guess we'll see at the end of this fiscal year whether that big bump that took place between fourteen and fifteen is real, 'cause we're, we're gonna see how it's been, been it out, 'cause some of it's straight across the board, like, it's an estimate. Okay.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Mr. Sir.
All right, I'm ready to assist to risk management. Sort of spells out what that's for. Anybody have any questions on it? Actually goes down by eighty-five, a hundred, eighty-five to one thousand? Um, anything under transfers and advances? Or debt service, excuse me? And we saved forty-two thousand on, uh, debt payments? And anything on transfers and advances? If not, let's go into this capital improvement.
Lou, let me ask one question, 'cause I, and I don't know where this goes, but we've all got, it's, it's update seventeen, and I had asked Bob about, I don't know, I can't remember what it was, what was called, but it was other, other types of compensation, and, and you said that it was a compensated absences that you account for, and we've got this update seventeen that you gave, or seventeen you gave us, does that number of the liabilities show up in the budget here somewhere? Or is that, is that money that you're setting aside for that show up somewhere else?
It is a liability, uh, it doesn't cover for the budget documents because you don't conserve liabilities from the budget document. None of your put aside in the compensated asset fund, but there's no fund balance because the total of the assets we put aside equals the liability, so there's nothing, there's no reserves or anything in that, in that particular one.
So, the money's showing on the budget that's identified as that leaves the budget and goes over to this fund?
That's correct.
Could be like somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay.
The five oh eight account that you're talking about, yes.
Okay.
Hey, let's dig into capital. Some of us were saving some of that. Questions on capital?
Maybe we'll just jump in anywhere?
Let's just have it open for any department.
Yeah.
If, um, you go to the first page, it tells you which departments, where it starts and everything, just start in with your questions.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
This is under the, uh, fire department, and it's, um, page D three, in regards to water supply li- uh, line at station two, it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and it looks like it's to replace or move two hydrants, um, and they had some repairs they did there in two thousand and fourteen, um, how many feet of line are we talking about there, any, any idea, anybody here?
Yeah, Seth?
So, at, at Public Works Engineering, we're assisting fire department on, on this project, and the footage align really depends on the route that we decide, uh, the, the reason I say that is there's currently two routes in consideration, the existing route, which, um, skirts the side of the building nearest the soda works.
Yeah.
That's where, where it goes now, um, there's a retaining wall along that route that would need to be rebuilt, um, in order for the water line to go through there, um, the other option is to go a completely different route and go around the building, which is a lot farther, and, and, uh, it's gonna cost more, so those are the two options that we have.
Seth, are you gonna use HTP?
Correct.
Because I know there is a corrosion, uh, cathodic protection issue with that line, we replaced it fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, because of, uh, uh, pitting and, and it started leaking back there on the, um, behind the, the residence side of the building, um, and so I just wanted to make sure that, uh, if we're gonna do that, we do something that will separate that, 'cause I don't know what it's doing to our main, and, uh, it goes right by a transformer back there, if I remember right, so we may have something, I don't know, we can have the ground here. So, the other option would be to cut into Tongus at the other driveway?
The water departments expressed, and I can concur with them, um, a concern about cutting into this new thirty-inch HDP that was installed as part of Tongus Phase One, so I think that's, um, the non-preferred option, to make another cut in from Tongus.
So the other thing would be to cut across the apron?
Mm-hmm.
Come through that way?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on capital, any department?
Yeah, Lou?
Yeah.
Couple of them that deals with, um, let's say, streets.
Give me a number.
Uh, you want a page?
Yeah.
I'm looking at L one, this, it's a summary on L one.
Got it. Everybody, L one.
The, uh, it, I think what we've done in, on the, uh, pavement overlay and service research, we dropped that one to two hundred thousand this year, it looks like it's a lot lower.
We dropped it by two hundred thousand, you're correct.
Okay, is that just because of budget constraints or because of need, not lack of need or lack of identity?
The need was out there, more budget concerns, knowing what we're gonna be up against over the next couple of years.
Okay, well, before we're done with, I think we need to think about increasing that, and there was one down there where I thought we could get it from, it was me, uh, I'll keep it in mind, the other one is, uh, I noticed that Deer Mountain, Austwick Park pavement up there, I assume we're gonna pave some of those streets out in two thousand and seventeen, I'm, I'm looking at this rate, it's priority number nine.
That's what it's shown as, and, and correct.
And, and what I wanna throw out to the staff is that the Deer Mountain parking lot for the trail, I don't, I'm trying to figure out, I never did get back with Steve for us to look it up, but, um, that parking lot needs to be paved, and I'm, and I'm not clear I, who controls it, the Forest Service or us, and I think there's some Forest Service money, if I could identify, they owned it, and through the, through the Rural Security School money. And through the, through the rural secure school monies that they have. But we need to get the city and them working together to figure out who owns it and what we can do about it because that just is nothing but a pothole and it's no man's land.
Acting Public Works Director, Steve Corpride. We did attempt to see if the Forest Service wanted to do anything about that lot, which is their property, and they said they had no desire to do anything at this time.
Well, and I talked to them, I think since you did that, because I heard that you talked to them, I think this summer. And they said it's not theirs, it's your, it's ours. And so I got, I need to know who to push on the side, and I'm going to push on both sides because I know they got the money in that, in that fund.
We'll find out.
And, and the same thing with the one at Carolina Lake Trail. That one there, I'm not, I can, I can remember vaguely whenever it was improved, a number of years ago, I don't know, the Borough, the BLM or something else. But both of those lots need improvement and paving on them and they got the money.
I think the one at Carlana was done by the Trails Corps and the improvements that was made there.
I think the Borough was involved at the time as well.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll double check ownership on both of them.
Yeah, and let's make sure where it's at so somebody, so they can't tell me it belongs to somebody else. Because if it belongs to them, they're going to think.
We'll, we'll get the proof of ownership.
And, and maybe if it belongs to us, whenever we're up there, out way on Deer Mountain anyway, and we're working that road, it wouldn't be maybe too much to add that thing in. Anyway, so we'll go from there.
We'll get proof of ownership for both for you.
Yeah.
Kenley and Bob.
I just had a question about the museum, the restroom expansion. I noticed that on the ADA site improvement, that's in the two thousand and eighteen, but what's going into the restroom expansions?
Carl?
Could you give me a page?
Got page number?
Oh, G one.
G one.
Just the overview, yeah. The restroom expansion at the museum.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's part of the bigger project that we're working on right now with the museum director and the advisory board. The idea is to take the existing ones out and replace them with ADA compliant, which will move back into the museum proper, which will be considerably larger than what we have.
We will have a report on that issue for council consideration at your December seventeenth meeting, so I can find out for.
I was just wondering if anyone investigated whether or not there was grants available for public. Usually there's grants available, government grants for public buildings to make them accessible. So it might be something to look into for just helping with the cost.
Get our grant right around there. I'm just being funny. Okay. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly small project, but looking at G seven, which is the museum and Centennial Building Totem Heritage Center. In the bottom photograph, they're talking about replacing some of the decking and adding some fill. But they also say it's beautification areas, they want to add soil, grass seed and other planting in that area. My problem is that, that all requires maintenance and trimming. A lot of times you plant a small tree next to a building and before you know it, it's too big. I really like what they did with the exterior of the library in regards to maintenance. And I think that as we're moving forward with the Totem Heritage Center, we should look at that because it's next to the creek and rockery would probably be, or paved or something would be less maintenance than plants and different things. And that area back on Park Avenue has a lot colder winters than we do on Alaska Avenue. So I'm just concerned about the maintenance there. Like see that, look at that.
I'm proud to say I have three sides of my house now gravel. I destroy law.
Well, and it helps with drainage. So is gravel. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Gravel helps with drainage.
All right, any, any more capital? Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, and, and this is a, a lookout to two thousand and seventeen, but we're talking about prior sprinkler system in the Centennial Building. Presently, we don't have a sprinkler system in there. I don't know at what point triggers having a sprinkler system put in and what the cost is. And if we have to do that and upsize the line, that's one of those meetings, buildings that really should have a meter and use a specialized rate because we don't want the cost to go up accordingly for water services. Oh, your honor.
Yes.
Another thing I looked at, and they may be able to do it in-house, is under Centennial Building on G thirteen, there's a project for the lower roof reinforcement of that building. It's a, I think it's a wood structure that sticks out, but it, it states in there that requires reinforcement in order to meet the current snow loading requirements. And we have that project all the way out to two thousand and twenty. And, and knowing that we may have a deficiency there, I would like to look at it through the reconstruction or something that we can do in-house to hopefully stabilize that before two thousand and twenty.
Is there, what's the, is there a charge for people going in? Is there still charge that?
Yeah, two and a half.
It's two and a half, three, something like that.
Yeah, two and a half bucks.
Keep rolling. Keep going.
On H four, we have a project at the Civic Center ballroom stage improvement and acoustical improvements in the ballroom. If I remember, we've done this at least two times. At what point do we, we say that we, or can we finalize this thing? I don't know if it's through every time we have changes in directors or we have changes in something. It seems that we're back again looking at acoustics in that building.
An issue that's raised with each director as each director comes in. It seems like the public continues to want to see acoustical improvements up at the facility.
Well, it would be nice to be able to hear and of course do everything that we could do, but at some point we have to get to a, I think to a finish point on that and say that it's done.
Well, we got the sprinkler system already done, didn't we this year?
We did.
I could have, I could have, like a couple of years ago, wasn't there something done? Or was that just the refinishing of the stage?
We just completed the refinish of the stage this year.
But we've dealt with acoustics a lot.
We have.
Yeah, it seems like we, we were always visiting that and it gets fairly expensive as we continue on.
And then there was the doors, interior lighting improvements. Do we know what that was?
Hope the doors are sticking.
The doors are sticking and.
The building is sinking.
There's some settlement there.
That's a major problem with the doors.
Well.
Thanks for sharing this.
There was Phil pushed over there and we just got through with a project rebuilding the floors themselves and doing some mudjacking in there to, because it was ripping the carpet where it was coming out.
And the doors have been.
And so the doors are coming out square too. And there's, there's a point you can't adjust them anymore.
We have the same problem with the KPU administration. Significant settling has taken place at that building as well, which you'll be hearing about probably in the next eighteen, twenty-four minutes.
So when they do the restroom remodel for the handicap accessibility, are they just planning on taking out one of the, one toilet per bathroom and?
I'll have to find out. You talking about the museum there?
No, I'm talking about the Civic Center.
I'll have to find out.
So I know, I know the bathroom is not wheelchair. Yeah, it's not even easy. At the Civic Center? It's, there's, I think there's just a little bit less room than there should be or something. When, it's just not as, because you have to go in.
The fall between stalls is not.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Because it just seems like the one stall is smaller than.
You wouldn't notice it if you're not in a wheelchair, but you're right, it is.
Okay, more questions on capital?
Yeah, your honor, I see that on page I one, and I guess we can go down here where the stamp mill and those things are, we're looking at, you know, forty thousand dollars out of the commercial passenger vessel fund. We have expressed concerns about what type of money we're going to get from that. So I had a question now, do we have the, the money to do this particular type of project at this time?
These projects won't move forward until we know the outcome of the audits and determination of the legislature is. When was that audit, when were they coming down? They're coming in on Monday and we're prepared for that, but depending on what the legislature does, they'll probably have a major issue to be talking about sometime.
Can someone explain what that is really to me?
What's that?
Timber and woods products.
Actually, the stamp mill is, it was on display at the Totem Heritage Center for some years. And then it was moved toward at the landfill, at least the park work. And there was, I think, a desire to bring it back and put it on dock for display.
That's correct.
Oh, so it's that big?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was wondering.
The timber and wood products interpreted exhibit is something that was recommended in waterfront master plan that was done by historic Ketchikan to chop them up with an exhibit of some sort, possibly over by the spruce mill, that would show people what we used to be in terms of our, our timber heritage.
Your honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
K Street is cemetery improvements. We're talking about paving that upper lot by the crypts. And I guess my comment is, can we look at doing that concrete? You know, the, the dark dreary days and stuff that we have, but concrete is just much brighter and more aesthetic. And I think that long-term in that particular area, it may just simply last longer.
Carl, can you check on that? We're making notes, Mr. Mayor.
Your honor, L seven?
L seven?
I hate to say it, but there's not enough money in that account. Four hundred thousand dollars in regards to pavement and overlay. I keep trying to fight to, to find ways to put money into that because, for one thing, if we have a small project, we have a hard time of cracking any type of papers. And we get it right at the end of the year in some of the worst of weather. Not to say that we, we have the ability to save these up and do them in a single year procurement, but as we go through this and we make some changes, if any, I would certainly hope that we could revisit this and hopefully get some more funds in there so we can do more work within the street division. One of the problems I have with this stuff, and I still think we need to resolve it, is one of the major costs in doing these overlays is the iron in the road. And where we have curb valves, they just soon leave the water surfaces below the finished grade. And then I still have a problem, I think, with, we did some talk about the parts and pieces it takes to put these water surfaces in. They use valve boxes, but they're ordering, they have to be special made now because they're not a stock order anymore. These cast iron sleeves that they cut the screws off in order to make them slide. We put so much labor with the contractor in them, there's got to be a better mousetrap out there. There's got to be something that we can do a better job of that with. And we just need to work with our water department to come up with that. Because I think that we're shooting ourselves in the foot and putting way too much money into the iron compared to the paving.
Mr. Mayor, I don't disagree, and that's a subject that's under review by my office, the Streets Division and the Water Division. We drive up Carlana, we paved a couple of years ago and you see exactly what we're talking about. And I think there are better ways that that can be done. Relative to the four hundred thousand dollar paving that were re-proposed in this year's budget, I don't disagree, you're right. And if the council wants to increase that by two hundred thousand to get it back to the six hundred thousand level, you'd have no objection to me. But I also draw your attention to D seven, which is the Bond and Spruce Mill Way Pavement Repair. And we're recommending a hundred and seventy thousand we appropriated this year to address the settlement on that street. Depending on what the ultimate solution is, if you look at the two thousand and seventeen numbers, that's a nine hundred thousand dollar budget just for a relatively small area. It's going to be a very complicated fix.
It's really just too dry.
Well, that's asphalt over six to eight inch concrete, so if the settlement's under the concrete, we're going to have some major.
There's all kinds of stuff down there. When all that was built, I guess prior to the Civic Center going in and, and the roads, I don't think there was adequate attention paid to.
This is Bond Street down on the end there, yeah? Okay.
What was down there? So if the council wants to make a motion to increase the paving by two hundred thousand, you'll have no objection from me.
Why don't we just wait until we get further until close to the summer? I've come up with all kinds of roads that you haven't planned on.
Can you bring that back as a budget update with a motion so that when it comes to that item, we can potentially do that?
I can do that. I will not have recommended roads by.
Understood, understood, yeah. Thank you, Carl.
A little related to that.
Yeah.
I don't know how sharp the pencil was on project, I'm looking at L one, but it's a project that, it's titled downtown crosswalk improvements and it's three hundred and fifty grand. I'm not, like I say, not knowing how sharp the pencil is and what all is involved there, I'd be inclined to take a hundred grand out of that, put it in this paving and leave two fifty.
If I could?
Yes.
If you go to page L nine, this was a former state grant. It was going to be a state DOT project in downtown. They're no longer interested in doing it. They've offered to turn the money over to us.
For the three hundred and fifty thousand?
For the three hundred and fifty thousand, that would be state funding.
But it has to be spent on crosswalks in the downtown. Initially, it was supposed to be crosswalks on the main highway, but the caveat with the grant was that we had to then take perpetual responsibility for those crosswalks even though they were on the state highway. So a couple of months ago, we were able to talk to them and they said, well, we could use it, as long as we use it on crosswalks downtown, it'd be okay. So we're looking at maybe throwing some of that money towards the spruce mill section there, not the whole thing, but where the cost of fixing the crosswalk area there. And we identified some other crosswalks in the immediate downtowner that are not part of the state highway that we can throw that to. But we can't just throw that, some of that money.
Okay.
On an overlay up on, you know, Deer Mountain or anything like that. It's got to be, got to be spent on downtown crosswalks.
Do we need to pave some streets downtown?
What exactly would you be putting into the crosswalks?
Anything for safety improvements, like, you know, the ADA access improvements. We're, we're going to look at several of them down there, but three fifty won't pull very far on some of these we have down there.
Like sound, like for the, for the blind or the blinking light ones?
I can check with the state and see if that would be acceptable or not.
Yeah, because then, like for instance, the blinking lights that are up higher, not in the, I know they put that one in.
We don't want to do anything on the state highway because they, they'll say we have to take over perpetual maintenance of whatever.
Right.
We put in, and that's a state highway, we don't want to do that.
But there are the ones that stand up and they blink at the traffic. So they're, it tells the traffic that there's someone in that crosswalk. That might be something to look into because of the way it gets so dark. I don't know if anyone's, it's pretty hard to see.
Are you talking about on the Tongus?
Well, the crosswalks, they have the crossing.
I know which street you're talking about.
Just even down here.
That's the state highway though.
Yeah, it's the state.
Oh, so it has to be on the docks or?
No. Anything on that side of this.
Like on this side of the street, back on Bond or Main Street or something like that.
Oh, okay.
It's a good idea.
How about Madison or?
That's the state highway. That's the state highway. It's all, it changes name, it changes name seven times, but it's all State Highway seven.
All right, we've got five more minutes before we have to start wrapping up rapid fire questions.
So relating to what she was talking about, the lights that we had at the tunnel and the one out there. Uh, so relating to what she was talking about, the lights that we had at the tunnel and the one out there toward, uh, McDonald's where we had the lights at the crosswalks, and we know they just, I guess they basically quit working and were painting, painting a rear end. Did we put those in or did the state put them in, say, you gotta deal with them, or?
We put them in, uh, I don't recall what the definitive agreement is, I know going forward, anything we wanna do down in Tongus now will become our responsibility to wanna put in systems up, and I don't think it was that clear-cut when we put the first two in. But, uh, the state has made it abundantly clear that anything we do, we're gonna take.
Oh, is there, is there a simple si- system besides the one that ran the lights across the street?
There, there are different options that are out there, you can have overhead systems. Um, you know, we can, we can get you an agenda report.
It's gotta be simple and clean and easy, not like a s- a light that comes on right on the side of the street. No overheads, no nothing, just.
But if it's on Tongus.
It's our problem now, yeah, I, I recognize that, yeah. But the power's already there to those sites. If we just didn't bury it across the street, it would seem like we could put up a post in us. I'm, I know I'm simple-minded, but, uh, a post and a light.
I'll actually look into it.
And I, and I don't know, it, it's, there's a number of people that continue to ask about it, cause as you all know, in, in the winter this time of year, it's so dark, you don't see anybody.
More questions? On capital.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at N five, and that's in the wastewater division, and we're talking about these horseman improvements that we have to do, um, replacements or liners or whatever that you know. As we move forward, Bob, what's that gonna do to our, um, bonding structure for wastewater? Um, it's looking to me like we're, by the time we get out there a few years, we're gonna be at, uh, four million dollars, um, and I don't know how much of that, uh, we're gonna end up with a, what, what's that gonna do to our rate structure?
I'll have to run the numbers to give you a definitive answer, but one thing that you might wanna know, if we're assuming that the state is gonna continue their seventy thirty masking grant program, and, and it's, obviously that may or may not happen, so that's gonna have a, a big impact if to whether we can even afford to do the project, but bottom line is, if you're through more debt, you're gonna have to raise rates.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, Lou.
Yeah.
Bob, was that state money or federal flow, flow-through?
State money.
It's state, okay, it wasn't federal coming through the state, okay.
All the capital masking grants, as far as I know, they're state money.
But you're right, council.
You have a loan.
It is federal money that, that comes to the state and then they, they present it to us.
Okay, I'm not saying they got any money either, but.
The grants that we get from the state are, well, all state money, but the loans we get are the clean water and the drinking water loan programs, there's a mix of federal and state money, but we have to pay that back.
Okay.
I have a question.
You got it, you got it.
Do we have, um, a list of all the rates that we're proposing to increase? Did I miss that?
It's in the transmittal.
It's in the transmittal.
That's what I'm looking at now, I'm just, I'm just too tired to see it, or?
There was another one, too.
And there are also budget, we did a couple of budget updates, one on general government and one for KPU.
So much paper. Okay, I'll look and see if I can't find it, I'll probably call in one of you guys.
If you can find budget update number two, there will be a schedule of all the proposed rate increases. Or, uh, if not, I can, I can get it together. And then on the KPU side, uh, budget update number one of the year.
You got a minute there, your honor?
Bob, you got some paper over there.
Pick it up when we start tomorrow.
Okay.
Your honor?
Yes.
On P four, it's, uh, the Port Harbors, and I know we're putting in two hundred and fifty thousand to work on the design to accommodate the newer class of vessels that we expect enter the Alaska market. Are we gonna get any funding from the cruise industry in regard to this, Steve, because, you know, it might be basically just the wrong ship in the wrong port because they're bringing ships that are normally used like in the Caribbean where they don't have these large tide swings. And so when you get these classes that have the tie-up pods and the overhanging, um, sightboats, uh, it adds an extra, uh, expense to our smaller port to accommodate them.
Port Harbor Director Steve Corcoran, um, we can ask the industry, and they're probably gonna say the state's got the CPV funding, that we're, our passenger paying thirty-four fifty ahead. That's where the money should be coming from because we are paying a bunch of money. The state just needs to give it to you, that's probably gonna be their answer. As, as far as the market, um, all the, all the new ships are, are built for the other markets, they really, there are no specific ships built for up here with these tidal ranges. So as the older ships ro- you know, are rotated out of service and the newer ships come on, it's gonna become more and more of an issue, that's why we need to get ahead of this now.
Thank you.
All right. Um, any last-minute capital, we'll do tomorrow, start our, just before we get into KPU. Carl, you don't have to bring the whole two in, we should just bring KPU in tomorrow. So, council member comments. Dick.
Right, your honor.
Judy.
Uh, your honor, we have a special, um, budget meeting on the fourteenth, and that's the Ad Hoc Marijuana meeting, too, are you guys still gonna?
We're still gonna meet, yes.
Expect a great turnout. Uh, yeah, no, I know, but I just wanna make sure, cause my understanding is we're gonna be having a, um, marijuana conversation added to that meeting, too.
On Monday.
On, on the same Monday, so right after the Ad Hoc. I just wanna make sure people know so they can come talk.
Where's the Ad Hoc?
It'll be at, uh, the.
That's when we get out early.
Not when it starts, it's like.
That's when we get out, you know, I get out early to be here.
So is Bob, are you gonna be on time?
I'll be on time.
Great. I'm coaching a team, cause our two police officers that are coaching are both gonna be gone, so I'm gonna be here like at six fifteen, racing indoor.
So we won't have any, we won't have any pot conversation.
No, you guys can have people.
Seven fifteen or six sixteen?
Six fifteen, excuse me.
You just said six.
You'll be the only one here at six fifteen.
I mean, seven fifteen.
You're gonna be early?
Game starts at six, but it gets done right around, it doesn't go that long, so, um, I just wanna warn you. All right, um, Kenley?
So, say if we, if we wanted to, um, add something to the agenda, we could, we do, we would do that tomorrow, too, or?
What do you mean?
Like the cigarette.
Oh, to the December seventeenth thing?
Yeah, for, yeah.
Well, you can ask for it now, if four people wanna put cigarette, um, thing, issue back on the agenda. Forehands? One, two, three, do we have a? Go ahead, Dick.
I'm gonna just make a comment, it needs to go back on the agenda, but do we wanna do it right now, or first of January, when it gets through the budget?
Got through with the budget, I think.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So otherwise, I'm with you.
And you won't be here for the December.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, for January.
Oh, okay.
In January.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Do we have forehands for January?
We can bring it back up in January, yeah.
Okay, sounds good, we'll bring it up in January. All right.
I wasn't thinking like this week.
Oh, okay, that's what I thought you meant. Julie?
Yeah, we can make that announcement now, I don't know if you had anything to add to it, but I kinda interrupted you last time.
You can make the announcement.
We're, we have a big event coming to Ketchikan, and it's January thirtieth, it's Saturday. And you, you all know we didn't have a Chana for us this year, so the chamber's putting on a big event. It's not going to be called the Chamber Award Ceremony, it's going to be the Chamber Gala slash Wines Around the World, and that is where we're going to recognize the City of Ketchikan for being a Coast Guard designation, it's a real big honor for the City of Ketchikan. And there are only thirteen cities in the United States that have that designation. So a lot of places have Coast Guard, but only thirteen cities, so it is a really big honor. And, um, you'll hear more from me later about it.
Excellent, thank you. Bob?
I would like to thank all the departments, um, for their input on the budget, it's, it's very well done, very well. Um, it, it's been one of the easier ones to, to go through. I, I still have a concern moving forward as the state monies are spent and there's nothing backfilling those for projects in the community, what that's gonna do to this type of a budget, and how are we gonna manage it, uh, two years out?
Okay, Jay?
I think the city budget was easy, we'll get, we'll get to KPU tomorrow, that's gonna be interesting.
Okay, um, tomorrow we'll talk about the last bit of capital, and then I'm gonna ask you guys to see if you'd be, um, two things I'd like to do on the city budget is, um, ask the management to reduce overtime, and I'm talking about each individual department, overall cost of overtime at least by twenty-five percent, and give us a rolling, um, update on a quarterly basis and how that's working, and looking at, um, having department heads look at how they're scheduling and, um, offering our doing overtime. And I'd also like to, um, cut travel and training and those expenses, too. So those two issues I'll bring up after we finish with capital. And I have nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.